Everybody, we can't see you, but oh, there we are. Now we can see you. Hi. How you doing? How's it going? Can they hear us?
Well, they're thinking this is the view they have of us.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Yeah, you sound great.
What happened? They disappeared. Can you hear them? We can't hear them. We can't hear or see them. We just see ourselves. We see Ryan. Oh, he can? Okay. Oh, he's on. Sounds great.
Okay.
Mic all, everyone? Yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah, it popped right up.
Yeah, it did before. Oh, here, switch to gal.
Oh, there you go, yeah. Oh, okay, now we can see people, alright. Hello, hello. Okay. Great, great. Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Cooper, he's on the beach.
Okay. Jesse, hey Jesse, how you doing? Joan? Okay. Okay, should we go ahead and get started then? Okay. Well, good evening, welcome to everybody. Thank you for joining us for our second town hall meeting. I'm here with Father Ryan, Father Jerry. We're in the school garden where we celebrate Mass. The school has lit up the garden at night, so the statues are lit and the statues, by the way, which have been repaired. Mary was damaged in the earthquake when she fell over, but her fingers are all repaired and Joseph needed a bit of touch up himself and there's lighting throughout, so it's actually really quite bright out here. I don't know, I'm not sure what you can see over there, but in any case, welcome and thank you for joining us. It's a brief meeting, I just want to give a just moment of prayer and then an update on some things going on in the parish and Father Ryan and Father Jerry both have an announcement about some of the other things going on in the parish that are really important. Today is the 1600th anniversary of the death of Saint Jerome. And Pope Francis released this marvelous letter on the scriptures and about Saint Jerome, who was known for his intemperate language. I kept thinking of the debates, maybe he would have been a really good debater as something like that. In any case, part of this letter, though, includes something that I'd forgotten about Saint Jerome, that he founded a community in Bethlehem over 1600 years ago now, who was dedicated to bringing the community together with the scriptures and a love and desire for that. But men and women together, living together and praying and reading the scriptures together. As a great scholar he was, he did something rather unusual. He invited women to become translators of the Hebrew and Greek for his great work of translating the scriptures from Hebrew, Greek into Latin, which we know as the Vulgate, the language of the people at the time. So as a community gathered like that, men and women all together in community, this is our Bethlehem, I suppose, we're outside and we're here to remember always that the Lord comes to us where we are. So I thought we'd begin with the opening prayer with Saint Jerome. So let us pray. Oh God, who gave Saint Jerome a living and tender love sacred scripture, grant that your people may be ever more fruitfully nourished by your word and find in it the font of life through our Lord Jesus Christ, your son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen, thank you. So let me just dive into this and then we'll have a time for questions at the end. I don't expect that this will be very long, but there's a number of things happening, but as you know, we have a pandemic and we've been dealing with racial reconciliation and now this contentious election. So I just wanted to kind of give a little flavor of what's going on. Many of you have seen it by coming to Mass. You know, we are celebrating masses on the outdoor garden here. We also celebrate all the sacraments here. Father Ryan and Jerry's done baptism out here. I've done a wedding out here and a funeral. And we celebrate the sacramental reconciliation as well, outside, either here or in other places. So that the sacramental life of the church is continuing and we're really happy about that. I also wanted to say a special thanks during this pandemic, the generosity of the community you've given to the food pantry. It has been greatly appreciated. Father Federico, who's at Our Lady of Hope of Christians and also the hospitality house on the Mexican border, has told me that the generosity has been overwhelming, that they've been able to help so many families regularly, but also people who show up at their door at any time. So thank you. Keep those donations coming, they're very invaluable. School began, our principal is on this call as well, we began at the normal time, but it's all virtual at this time. There is no students on campus, they're all studying at home. There's a lot going on with that right now, some developments later this evening, so we're hoping that we might be able to go back onto campus as the LA County Board of Supervisors approved applying for waivers to have students attend. But that's just beginning process and it seems like it changes every day, but there is some hope with that. But as long as we can gather together safely, we've made every preparation possible here at the school, so we're hoping that that will take place. When will we return? We don't know. We follow all the guidelines very closely because we want everyone to come here to feel safe and actually be safe in this time of pandemic, so as soon as we know, we'll let you know. But the part of the issue has been that we do get conflicting information sometimes from the government and so we try to be really, really careful and judicious about how we share that. But so that's going on. You know, as you know, there's been a really difficult time for our nation as we kind of grapples with the racial reconciliation. So we're looking at some programs to reflect on race. One of the most important is participating in the Just Faith Program. So John Doyle, who's also on this call, and Vanessa and Claire will be looking at that program. It is a program that looks at Catholic social teaching and as an intensive course for parishioners and helps us to reflect and helps lead the parish on reflecting on various issues. Right now, certainly racial reconciliation would be a very, very important one, so we hope to continue that. And we'll have a lot more information about that. I'm working on the possibility of another program, we have a conversation about race in this kind of setting with Zoom. But it's important to have. The election is coming up and the debate was any last night was harbinger of things to come. It does look very hopeful. But I, one of the remedies, I think, was this kind of call to come back to our faith. This Sunday is the Feast of Francis of Assisi and Pope Francis will be releasing a new encyclical letter, Fratelli Tutti, Dear Brothers and Sisters, and it's on human solidarity. It's using Francis's own words to talk about how we are truly one people. At least that's how God created us to be, and he talks about the challenges of that and some of kind of recapturing our place as Christians in this kind of divisive world. So I think that it's a great remedy. I read about half of it and it's amazing, so it'll be released on Sunday and we'll certainly post it and share it with you and maybe that could be a topic of one of our conversations via Zoom. So that's coming up. So we're really trying to be attentive to all of that. We will continue to do so. To switch gears a little bit, kind of maybe building on Saint Francis, rebuilding the church, thanks to the annual Parents Working for Children, PWC, a gift to the parish for our church. We've done a little bit of work in the church, it's mostly coming to completion. We've restored the Reridos, that's the big wooden panel behind the altar. Many thanks to John Griffin for organizing this. He's an amazing, amazing person and he's been really helping us do all of this and with an eye of great love for the church that he has. So that's been completed. We've also installed an Ambry, which is a holy oils cabinet, near the baptistry into the wall where we could put it. Additionally, we surrounded it with the four stained glass windows. They are the four windows that depict the four evangelists that were in the original baptistry, which is today the confessional. So we relocated them around the Ambry. It's really, it's quite stunning, it's really, really beautiful. We were able to get some new celebrant chairs. They're not thrones, they're really kind of simple wooden chairs, but that are liturgically appropriate. We'll be recarpeting the altar area as well. And also, kind of this, this will be an ongoing reflection and I hope, once we're able to gather inside the church, we'll have these conversations at a deeper level, but one of them is to look at our space post-pandemic. So part of that has been to maybe think about reorienting some of the pews and the flooring in the church so that when we do gather, we're not on top of each other, because however this shakes out, I think we're still going to have to have some some physical distancing, at least where people feel comfortable with that. So the first step in that for us has been to put the tabernacle back on the altar as originally was, and so we've done that. And we have some pictures of that, so we'll put those up in a second. Along with that is to move Mary over to where the tabernacle was and Joseph to where Mary was. Our hope is that that will decrease foot traffic around the altar and and having people not bumping up against each other very much at all. So that's been going on in the church. It's, it looks really wonderful, I think. I think, oh yeah, so here's the holy oil cabinet. It's called the Ambry, so the oils are in there now. John Griffin did a great job in taking the old doors, the confessionals, restoring them and taking off all the handles and things so that so that he could put it in there, that's as close as we could get to the baptistry, so it's pretty good. You haven't shot over the windows? Yeah, and so that's, those are the windows from the original baptistry, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John. So that's what it looks like. If so, as you walk into the church, baptist, the bapt, the font is right in the middle and this is to the left and up just a little bit where the old confessionals were, so. And a picture of the sanctuary. So there's the tabernacle restored with the wood that was been restored, the Reridos. Again, John built the shelf for that, which is really nicely completed. So that's what it's looking like right now. Right in the center is the sanctuary lamp, it hangs above the sanctuary, so where the, near the tabernacle. It's also the original location when the church was first constructed. So that's what's been going on inside the church and we're very grateful to the school and PWC for their help and well, their gift to the parish that they give annually so that we might make improvements in the church. So we look forward to you being able to see that in person. Next, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our stewardship. And one of those is the virtual church, so some of those programs we've been doing, we've had Father Sarah talk, I did a talk on prayer from the Grand Canyon. We had a wonderful nationwide prayer service on Our Lady of Sorrows that was really quite moving. So there's more coming, there's more of that coming and it's really part of the way we steward during this time of pandemic to be united in those sorts of things. But I did want to take a moment to talk to you a little bit about the finances. We did receive a PPE loan from the federal government for $115,000, which we've already used to help keep employees employed and paid. So we don't know, you know, how we'll be able, I'm not sure when or how the process is to pay it back, but that's still being decided by the Small Business Administration. But since then, since that expired, our collections have been down roughly between $5,000 and $6,000 a week because there are no, there are no, nobody, I mean, very few people actually come to Mass, so so I wanted to take a moment to, working with Finance Council, so aptly led and so wonderfully led by Joe Trubalusi, is to make an appeal to you to, number one, give online, especially if you're not coming to Mass. We broadcast that information all the time and it's certainly the daily emails. Either weekly or a one-time gift or a monthly gift, whatever that might be, and if you already do give, is to up that a little bit. It wouldn't take a lot, I think we're, if you can discern and pray over what might be a way that you might increase your giving, that would be extremely helpful. Right now, at least for this first quarter of the fiscal year, we have had to reduce the salaries, including the priests, by 10%. And we'd like to be able to try and push that up and restore everyone's salary, especially those who work here besides the priests. So that's a really important appeal I make to you. And if you do so, I'd encourage you, some parishioners have told me that they thought about it, remembered and they started calling friends and telling them, "Oh, you know what? Have you thought about this?" So when you think about it and you pray about it and you up your giving, if you can, you know, we know this is a difficult time and an uncertain time, but if you can, you're able, please do so. And by a percentage, maybe it's 10%, maybe it's 20%, maybe it's 100%, whatever it is, we really appreciate that and be very helpful, but share that with other parishioners, other friends, you know, and tell them, you know, we, the church needs a help, particularly at this time. Associated with that, we're going to do two fundraisers. One is for All Souls Day. We haven't been able to sell candles because the church is closed, so we have like 200 candles in stock. And so we'd like to sell them for $20 apiece as a fundraiser, but also associated with All Souls Day. So we'll ask you to purchase a candle for a beloved departed friend or family and we'll write the name on the candle and light them around the altar for a prayer service on All Souls Day. Just a brief prayer service to call out their names in prayer on that day. Usually that's the requiem mass that Chris Walker led with his choir, we're going to miss that this year tremendously, as we miss Chris and his amazing ministry here at St. Paul's. Another issue with the pandemic is music and how we do that, but we will gather and more information will start coming out in the next day or two about that, so if you can help us with that, that would be great, but hopefully it draws our stewardship together with our prayer all in one moment. The other is thanks to the leadership of Danny Herman on the school board and on the pastoral council. We're going to have a new program called the Festival of Lights. It is a way which will decorate the entire campus with trees and nativity scenes and have people able to walk through, kind of like a walk, instead of a drive-by, a drive-through, a walk-through. There's a big wasp here, anyway. So walk through the campus with that. A lot more information is coming about that, that'll be in early December. So we're hoping to use those both to help raise money. I'll also be reaching out to parishioners directly by mail, a snail mail, with more information and ways to give. But for now, if you can do that, we'd really, really appreciate that. Then I'm moving to some quick announcements and I'll have Father Jerry and Father Ryan share some things with you as well and then we'll do some questions and dialogue and we'll close with a final blessing. We have Blessings of the Animals on this Sunday, October 4th, Feast of Francis of Assisi, at 4 o'clock in front of the church. You can drive by if you'd like, we'll be there to bless your animals through the corridor or or in front of the church if you want to come out, we'll do the physical distancing and do the prayers there, so please join us for that. We're very excited to continue our relationship with UCLA for the blood drive, that's October 9th. They're really in need of blood and they've asked us to kind of keep doing this on a monthly basis and so we're going to continue doing that. If you can, please sign up. It's here at the JCPC and they're really, at the parish center and they're very good about making it a safe experience, physical distancing and Mass and the work, so you'll be very safe to do that. The virtual, the Fall Festival that we really, I know the kids are missing it a lot, we're all going to miss it tremendously. It's virtual this year, it's on October 10th, Saturday, October 10th, at 6:00 PM. We auction and other things associated with that, casseroles, it's an amazing experience. The theme they've chosen is Ohana, which is the Hawaiian word for family, and it's really a reflection on the pandemic that maybe what's one of the silver linings, if you will, of the pandemic is that it's really has caused us to look at what's really important in our lives, maybe through, before we were more busy than we should have been and maybe to really focus on what really sustains us and that, that's really our relationships. Talking back to what Pope Francis says in his letter, Fratelli Tutti, that it is our solidarity with one another that keeps us together. So Ohana, the family, that's the fall, virtual Fall Festival on October 10th. Also, right after that, on October 15th, the men's prayer group has engaged Father Tom Ryan, he's a Paulist priest who does amazing work on ecumenical interfaith dialogue. A part of his spirituality is a deep commitment to meditation, so we're going to present a program on prayer as meditation. That's all in the daily emails, but I just wanted to draw attention to them because I think they're really, they're just really ways, important ways of keeping in touch and being able to have conversations around various issues. So before we take questions, I know Jerry has a couple of things to say and then Father Ryan, so Jerry?
There you go. Thank you. Let me take this one first. Just wanted to fill you in a little bit. For those of you who aren't aware, I'm actually the coordinator or the director of the RCIA, I should say. And earlier this year, as things were progressing, I had several people who were interested in pursuing the RCIA and I chatted with them and we seemed to be all gathered together really wanting to proceed with RCIA, but then as the reality indicated that it was less and less likely that we were able to gather in person as we normally would for the RCIA program, several of the people decided that they would return to shelter at home with friends and family elsewhere. The upside of it was, at least I was able to help them get connected with parishes where they were going and get them involved with RCIA programs there as well. But I'm happy to report here, we have our RCIA program continuing. Lisa Wellick and Ann Palter have graciously offered again this year to assist me. And we do have one person who is seriously interested in becoming Catholic, hopefully at the Easter vigil this year. So it's a little bit of a different situation, it's not RCIA as we normally would have RCIA, but it's there and with the grace of God and the power of the Holy Spirit, I think it will lead at least this one person to the Lord's table come Easter in the spring. So I would just ask that you please keep them in the prayers and we'll keep you posted as things go on about how it is progressing. But in the meantime, just ask for your prayers, okay? Thank you.
My turn. Also, as another one of my roles, I'm the coordinator for team confirmation. And we had a little delay of getting all of our teams confirmed for this last year, but that has been completed and we are ready to move forward for the 2020-2021 confirmation program. We are basically looking at doing it this year differently than we have in the past, as most things are, but it'll be a home-based and a Zoom virtual-based program for year one of all of our high school students entering first freshman year in high school. And year two, those who completed our year one program who are now sophomores will be able to join us virtually and through this home-based program. The plan is that registration will be opening up for that this weekend. More information will be coming out probably tomorrow for those who are directly maybe influenced or interested in confirmation for teenagers. So that'll hopefully be coming out tomorrow about registration. And we look to begin this with our first virtual Zoom meeting on October 25th. So if you're interested, you're not someone who I've already kind of know about, whether you just graduated from St. Paul's here in eighth grade or you were a part of our program last year and you know someone who's in that group, teenager, freshman year or sophomore in high school who has not yet been through confirmation, please send me an email and I will be more than happy to send out that registration information. But and for those who are involved in that or connected to that, please expect today at the very latest tomorrow or tomorrow or very latest Friday, information to come out. We had to redo some things on our website and the registration form. And before we sent out that information, we wanted to make sure everything was working properly. So we hope that with a few more tests tomorrow, by tomorrow afternoon, that'll be able to go out and you can then begin to open registration and register online for our reprogram this year and we're excited and looking forward to really calling the spirit down and being with us as we learn and grow together as a community in this new kind of unexpected way, but the apostles weren't expecting the spirit to come in the upper room either, so. And they were all together locked in, so we're just living in and out the real first, kind of first Pentecost kind of way. So just thank you and again, if you have any questions about team confirmation, send me an email, my email's on the website.
I also want to note that we've, here at the school, we've been able to have a Mass of the Holy Spirit with the eighth grade present and we're going to have masses with the students here on campus and their families at different, for different feast days. The next one will be All Souls Day, November 2nd, so we're excited that we're able to bring the students here for those. Additionally, the chaplains are visiting the classrooms via Zoom. I have not started, I have a seventh and eighth grade and I haven't really started that yet, but we'll start that very soon. You have the?
Fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth and?
One, three and four.
One, three and four, so you'll be seeing us around. You got them covered, so anyway, thank you. So before the final blessing, I just wanted to take a few questions. If you have any, please let us open the chat, we'll open the chat.
We don't have the chat open on ours.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. That's just people. Oh, okay. Oh, we can hear you, sounds great, doing great. Hi, Father, hey, Jesse. Okay, great. We can hear you, sounds great. Thanks, Jesse. Oh, this is. Oh, that's it, so, okay. All right. We can give you a couple of seconds if you have any questions. No one else is, just good to see you, we can see your faces, so that's been really, really nice. Especially those we don't see too often.
And we miss seeing you folks, most importantly, okay?
Yeah, yes, yes. That's true, so. I know I rushed through a lot of things, so I mean, if you have questions, it's fine or you can email us. You know, we're here, yeah, and if you don't get the daily mail, if you know someone who wants to, just have them send me an email. Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, yes, Father Ryan's on the 14th, the Feast of St. Calysta, sorry, not the 15th, yes, so at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, how can you get families involved with mass? We know at the school, we're able to do that when, on these special feast days. The rest of the days, we're, we're really limited by the, by the physical distancing. So right now, we're finishing First Communion. We have them this weekend again and then we're taking a week off and for the festival. And then on the 17th, 18th, we'll continue with that. So it's, right now, it's just very, very limited to do that. Although this Sunday at the 9:30 Mass, where we have First Communion, we're going to rededicate and rebless the statues here, Mary and Joseph. So we're going to crown them. So we'll have the kids participate a little bit that way. When you'll be sent, we will begin selling All Souls candles tomorrow. Yes, tomorrow. Yeah. Our new website's going up tomorrow, should be tomorrow. And you can purchase it through the website. If you go, it's called Light the Can, Light a Candle. Light a Candle will be, it's will be. Same address, same address. Yeah, I missed the skull about Chris Walker and the, what plans we have for music ministry at Mississauga. Right now, we, we don't have any plans. We, we are getting along with Adam Jones and James, Jim Casey on the Saturday 5 and Adam Jones is Sunday at 9:30, Saturday at not 5. And Adam Jones is Sunday at 9:30. We, we're not budgeted for director of music and we won't be able to until fall of 2021 or the fiscal year 2021, 2022. As, as, as everything we're hearing to date is that choirs will not be allowed until the fall of 2021. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a little difficult. We, we can have two singers, but they have to be 12 feet apart and at least 12 feet from everybody else. So in this space, that's very limited. We're going back in the church. We'll, we'll have a little more flexibility with that. But it's really sad. We missed the Skola tremendously too. And as I mentioned earlier, November 2nd is usually the day for, for the Requiem Mass. It's, which is, it's, we're going to miss it this year. Let's see, I think that's, that's it? Okay. Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, good. Thank you. Again, just send us an email. We're all happy to respond to you at any time. So we'll just conclude with the, the blessing prayer. I love the blessing from Aaron. So we'll do that together. The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
May the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord let his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. May the Lord look upon you with kindness and give you peace. And may Almighty God bless you, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Peace be with you and come by anytime to see us.
Yes, we miss you, but we're keeping in our prayers. Okay, in the meantime.
Amen. Peace.